We don't know what's going on.
So, you want?
They're looking for an assessor up on the swivel line.
Although, you know, every time the Yankees do something like that, something is screwed. Somebody blows their arm out.
It's the only team in history to beat Joe Paterno four years in a row. Is there no answer to that?
Probably Michigan if you're asking.
What's the only team to beat Joe Paterno's Nittany Lions four years in a row?
Has to be Michigan.
You're the one asking the question.
If I asked, it'd be Syracuse, right?
Yeah.
And you know that's not true.
He knows the answer.
Two years in a row.
I think Charlie, I like your tie. It's better than Bob Weston's. It's nice tie, Bob. It's a nice tie. Christmas. It's Christmas.
We had a wedding reception. So, we were all watching a football game.
Where's Water? I don't know. Somebody. Yeah, I heard a punch out. Pirates flying around.
I can go ahead and talk to him, but I quit.
He said he had to talk to him a lot.
I had to do that because I would have told him another job. And I said, "Yeah." I said, "I called him last night and told him that CTSI was going to be there." He said, "No." And he said, "We got our service to CTSI." That's right. I'm just telling you what he said instead of going on.
We wish TSI, sir. The problem is that they're all going to pay to go back. They should always take it. They all pretty much prefer us. Horizon seems like it happens to reach. There is so much that they're really struggling with. Captain E. Business is in your tub. They lost 60,000. Because the U.S.A.
What's the hold of it? Where do we count? I thought that those were already done.
Anyway, Mayor, we got your phone number.
Please rise for the place of flag invocation.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation under your guide, individual liberty and justice for all.
I'm the individual that's in charge of the invocation in our last common council meeting. Due to the fact that it was Veterans Day, the invocation was directed to the veterans. Except we added a little notation onto that invocation that read as, "Give our athletes the strength to play hard, fair, and show sportsmanship. And let them have the opportunity to gain, to gain which all of you have done in your own unique way." A little proverb that is brought to light is as follows. "We can choose to throw stones, to stumble on them, to climb over them, or to build with them. You certainly have built with them respect and pride. This community and all of us are very proud of your individuality and your coaches and the athletic director. You lift at the spirit of this community and we thank you. Let many blessings be with you as you journey through life. Amen."
Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alman Sahaski?
Here.
Alman Weston?
Here.
Alman Sherman?
Here.
Alman Thompson?
Here.
Alman Weston, you...
The mayor of the council certainly recognizes the hard work and dedication of all our sports teams from the youth leagues, which consists of pop work, knee-high baseball, knee-high basketball, excuse me, youth soccer, Pee-Wee Wrestling, youth hockey, knee-high, and Quanis baseball. Of course, there's probably other youth groups that I forgot. But the lessons that they learn from these youth sports, sportsmanship, developing their skills, and carry on to the high school level. And we are certainly very proud of all of our teams. And especially tonight as we recognize the accomplishments of the year 2000 Fulton Football Team. I think they made all of us proud to be a Fultonian. They certainly carried the name Fulton throughout the state. So, we're extremely proud of them. At this time, I'd like to introduce Tom Eggleston, who's the Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics. And have him introduce possibly Coach Connors and the players that are here tonight. And then the mayor will read a proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Weston. Turn the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. And I want to thank you for having us here tonight. I want to thank you both as a group for representing the city of Fulton that followed our team so strongly. And then individually, I know many of you enjoyed watching them play at a number of contests. At this point, I'm proud to introduce the coaches that were able to be here tonight. And I'll ask them to introduce the players that are here. Unable to be here from our coaching staff, we have an outstanding coaching staff. But unable to be here were Coach Rothrock and Coach Bono. But here with us are our assistant coach Craig Halliday and our head football coach Mike Connors.
I'll do the speaking and I'll let Craig do the introductions because he talks too much. But sometimes you worry about what he says. We'd like to thank you very much for having us here. I apologize, it's been kind of chaotic with switching sports with Abby trying to wrestle up all the kids and get them here. There was a basketball game scheduled tonight and a lot of them were supposed to go to that. So, a lot of scheduling problems getting everyone here this evening. We'd like to thank you. I think along the lines of what you were saying is I think we took a... Or I think they took a group of boys and they became men this fall. I think they really grew up and really learned a lot about camaraderie, sportsmanship, being part of a team. And it was exemplified by their winning run to the state title game. And without further ado, I'll bring in Coach Halliday to introduce the troops. Here this evening are Matt Pollak, offensive lineman, defensive lineman, Nate Drake, linebacker and fullback, Mitter Ky, linebacker and fullback, Adam Janis, wideout, defensive end, Tim Carlin, wideout, defensive back, injured with the crutches, Joe Rodriguez, offensive lineman, defensive lineman, offensive lineman, defensive lineman, Mark Kitz, Phil McCaffrey, linebacker, offensive guard, Byron Blanford, offensive lineman, defensive... Thank you.
I'm sorry. What? That was a good shot.
Oh, we argued so much. I was just saying, guys, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it on a nice windy evening as it was, taking time out of your evening to come here. Also, we have Cindy McCaffrey, who's our filmer, films all our games for us. She's not going to get out of this season. We'll get her out there for a little recognition. She does a wonderful job, volunteers her time to the program, and videotapes all our games. Which sounds like it could be fun, but when you're in Buffalo, up there in the top of Ruffles Stadium, it probably wasn't the most enjoyable task in the world, sitting up there with a video camera filming the game. She does a wonderful job. Thank you.
On behalf... On behalf of the common council and the city, I want to congratulate all of you on one terrific season. I had the chance to get up and see you play the games in the Dome. And you did just an outstanding job. And we really appreciate it. You brought Fulton forward. And next year, one step further. I'd like to read this resolution we have at this time. And then we will vote on it. And I believe we have some copies.
Yes, we do.
Whereas, the G-Ray Bodley High School Varsity Football Team coached by Mike Connors and his staff Chuck Bono, Jeff Rothrock, Craig Halliday, and Dave Eddy, began the Fall 2000 season 0-3. And thereafter won nine straight games to reach the New York State Championship Games. And whereas, they then defeated ESM 48-4 in the Section III semi at PNC Stadium. And Carthage 48-14 for a Fulton first-ever Section III championship in football. And whereas, the G-Ray Bodley High School Varsity Football Team defeated Elmira Free Academy 41-6 to become Central Region Champions. Then defeated Victor 48-19 at Ralph Wilson Stadium in Buffalo to become Western Region Champions. First time ever for a Section III Class 18. And whereas, the G-Ray Bodley High School Varsity Football Team generated an enormous community following and electrified the Dome in the State Championship versus NIAC. And whereas, these exceptional athletes being Matt Kipland, Gerald Cocopodi, Colin Blake, Matt Vincent, Mike Allen, Tim Carlin, Craig Fitzpatrick, Adam Janis, Josh Reynolds, Nate Drake, Mitter Keeb? Kybe? I knew I was going to butcher somebody's name. Scott Conger, Sean Spataro, Andy Carpinko, Mark Kitz, Brett Thornburg, Joe Rodriguez, Greg Cooper, Matt Pollak, Nick Barnes, Keith Wise, Brad Rose, Dan Murray, Aaron Kahn, Justin Bailey, Dave Crowfoot, Edvin Burin, Phil McCaffrey, Marcus Termina, Ed Phelps, Brian Blanford, Harry Merritt, and James Warren, have dedicated the time, effort, and discipline that it takes to accomplish these tremendous feats. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of the common council hereby recognize the great accomplishments achieved by Coach Connors, his staff, and the G-Ray Bodley High School Varsity Football Team, and congratulate them on a job very well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of this common council meeting of December 5th, year 2000. And the copies also be sent to Coach Connors, his assistant coaches, and to all the members of this exceptional team. Do I hear a motion?
Absolutely, I make a motion.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Congratulations. The copies.
Jeff? Does the list of hearing budget? It's a same format use of...
Pardon me?
It's a gearing budget.
Yeah.
It's a same format use of... I know for towns, and I probably go through this every year with you, I know for towns you're supposed to put in their proposed salaries above.
Yep, come on in. Come on in.
When you do a budget hearing for a town, you're supposed to put in their proposed salaries. Town officials or something, so I'll look at it.
Maybe be in the pack of the budget.
But I think it's... Town, under town laws, it's supposed to be the actual numbers.
Oh, no, I've never had to do that.
I think the protest in here.
Yes. How are you going to need us?
If you guys want to squeeze in maybe like I take another row in front.
There's beginning two rows. Then front office, your front job. There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Alex. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. Hey, congratulations, good job.
Do you want to see if the things are ready?
Yeah.
We lost our crowd.
We lost our crowd. Do we have any more races to vote on?
Want to go to the road?
Go to the road.
Teacher just went down to get the paperwork, this and the copy, and then we'll continue with the agenda.
Why does teacher keep leaving our meeting?
Why what?
Why does he keep leaving us?
Because I gave him a task of running a number of copies that you need to have.
We need a high speed.
It's... It's not the budget.
You're that give Joe longer legs. Races platforms. You don't want to know. How was that for a senior day? Were you at the resort up there? Buddy Cassius first day out here. Never been there in the winter, but it's got to be super. Okay, let's go. Nice delivery. Nice delivery, it's been nice. Actually going out to Walzoni Island this weekend for a... Hunting. We have so many deer up there. We don't know anything about George. They do wait over here and they want people up there to choose. Somebody go up there, stay in the cabin, freeze lane. Get a gun, push off. We have a fireplace. Orange forecast is about the same as today, cold and snow.
Waiting for Joe. I guess, I don't know.
Say, I can see a missus, though. Original comment. Oh, okay. Selection today. Still runs. I don't see any red lights on it. Need a red light on it. We can, we can, we can...
We're going to run through the agenda. It's a short agenda, then we'll... Okay.
Make it snappy. Something that's snappy. We will be along. There's a memo from Carol that says... In fact, we need a resolution. They didn't get any. Because we were ready to do this in August. When I originally thought we were going to make a resolution. And I prepared a resolution to get around our assessing of all the hearings. It's too weak.
Oh, all right.
Red flag, didn't it? That's why I said didn't say. And you know, there's no emergency. And we're doing investments, so we can't get in with an ADA violation. I don't have any problem with that. It delays it, so what if we save three or four thousand dollars? You have to leave it there right now. If there is, we got to crowbar, right? John was... John told me that he got reviewed by WSPI yesterday, so listen to him. He started off saying, "If you let them forward your taxes, they'll upset us now." To help you for races. Congratulations, I think you're a really huge pro. And he said, "Here's the assistance of the urgent request." And he came across very clear. Anybody listen to this guy, say listen.
Scott, would you go check with Joe and see if you can help him if he needs any help to get the stuff up here? Yes.
What do you got for us?
Oh, I thought it was over the merge. I don't know. What's Joe doing?
Those copy, getting the copies that are necessary to go with the resolution.
Oh, okay.
For the department heads.
Oh.
Because they're all individual agreements. Pegs of the stick.
That's right. He's down there crying. He's either passed out or the other.
I got more than double that to be done. I need a list of what we've done. We keep giving them better benefits. That's our prerogative. I certainly can't take any wins. Forty-one will never be done. First Street will get done. First Street will get done. When's that going to happen? No, the way to do it. Don't put in the contract, have a council resolution. Full court. Did you mean one? For what? I found some cases as you were talking. As long as it's not a contractual obligation. For how long? Hey, Nicole. I was leaving Diane's today. My daughter was at the top of the stairs and I'm trying to... She's fine. They didn't even turn black and blue or anything. I was kind of like, come on, they got at least a colleague. She cried the whole way home. Bought back some memories of me when I was a kid getting my finger slammed doors. It had to hurt like crazy. Bought back some memories of me when I was a kid getting my fingers slammed doors. It had to hurt like crazy. Yeah, because that railing's on the left and then she reaches to the right and her fingers are right. I didn't even know. Couldn't figure out why the door wouldn't shut until she stepped. She told me that. I felt bad. I felt worse than she did. It's gonna be a good article or is it gonna be a good article?
Because don't forget what you're talking about.
No, I don't. But I mean, they want some fires to remove from office. With the police escort, right? Oh, he did. Swiggle continues to make us look good.
Of course he is. Oh, yeah.
Where else?
Oh, sure they did. I'm sure they raised it.
Maybe they never thought they could do that. I think they gave them some of those.
Oh, is it the one there that sits on the corner?
Right, Donhead.
Yeah, I know where you're talking about.
Maybe they didn't think they could do it.
Right, right, because he lives on a, he lives like on a curb.
Right, yeah, right.
What's your birthday? The 19th? Mine's the 17th. That's fine. That's a great time here to have birthdays, isn't it? I know, it's hard. Bert Bruce?
Oh, you're Fred.
Well, jeez, we haven't seen her in a while. I knew.
We could continue. Somebody can just saw it. He just needs to have notice to We'll give a shout.
Doesn't he have property of
Nothing so Rather without Mary or being married, he doesn't know what to do with it, right?
I don't know. He usually work, he usually goes in like at five o'clock in the morning.
I haven't heard any like his grievance.
Like three in the afternoon or something. Yeah, unless he had to work overtime or something. But he dropped me off last night. He said he'd be to work at five o'clock tomorrow morning. It's an early day.
If they're on the floor, don't take a deep breath.
Who's next? You guys are gonna take a trip down.
We're gonna start drawing straws here.
Anybody in the first line there? We might have a scoop down.
Oh goodness.
Probably calling everybody. You know what you got for race. One's surprising.
It was. I don't know.
One of the shortest of judges and probably one of the longest meetings.
What time is Rudolph? Oh, we might be able to make it.
I got, I got the tape. I got the tape. Where do you have the kid? The kid likes it.
You don't look that old.
You'll see it another seventy-one times if you got a kid that likes it. Yeah, it's a week. Oh, you love it. Pregnant weight. It's challenging? Yes, that's a very, very diplomatic way to put it. Learned real quick to just smile and nod. It's the fifth time in the last five days. Hey, somebody's back. They relocated for you to drive. Scotty does it on the floor. So it's not
Contracts, PBA contracts?
All those contracts.
Another meeting. We could save that for the end.
The ones that were going in, not coming out. Okay. Due to a problem with the copier that they are trying to repair at this point in time, we will move forward with the agenda.
Way to go, Bob. There's gotta be those two.
Resolved that the minutes of the common council meeting of November 21st year 2000 are hereby approved per attached.
How much?
We're gonna have to go slower because I don't read as fast as Joe. Who was the second?
The tie between John and I. Use your discretion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Notation that the city clerk has advised this common council that the proper letter of disclosure has been filed with him pursuant to section 803 of the general municipal law as follows. Aaron Bowman, wastewater treatment plant, working for Market America Incorporated.
Do you know what product that company sells? Malit says is a direct marketing product brokerage firm.
That, that is it.
We don't know what kind of product it brokers?
No.
I would, I think it's household products. I think that's a, I think that's the name I'm familiar with. Market America. Kind of like Amway or? Yeah.
Soap?
Yeah. You need some?
Thank you.
Your thing.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on December 19th, 2000 at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers of municipal building Fulton, New York to consider the proposed 2001 budget of the city of Fulton, New York and that said advertisement should advise all citizens, including citizen, senior citizens, handicapped citizens and their respective organizations, that they have an opportunity to be heard and be it further resolved that the said proposed 2001 budget shall be complete and available for public inspection at the office of the city clerk in the municipal building Fulton, New York during the week prior to said public hearing. Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolved that the city clerk's report for October 2000 in the amount of $7,392.52 is hereby received and approved and placed on file. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for sealed bids in his office located in the Fulton Municipal Building, 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, on or before January 2nd, 2001, up to 2:00 PM and be publicly opened at 2:15 PM that same day in the common council chambers of the municipal building on the second floor for elevator renovations in accordance with specifications prepared by the city of Fulton Engineering Department. Motion?
Move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Do you want to skip the next one? And then come back to it?
We're gonna have to pass on the next one at this time because that's what they're copying. Whereas the police department received a donation in the amount of $75 to be used specifically for the DARE program. Now therefore be it resolved that the city Chamberlain increase the budget revenues of A2705 gifts and donations by $75 and budget appropriations A2989.4035 DARE program in the same amount. Motion? I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolved that pursuant to chapter 177, subsection 177-54 entitled Right-of-Way Usage, the request submitted by Harold Short-Sleff of 508 Seneca Street, Fulton, New York, be referred to the Fulton Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolved that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for sealed bids in his office located in the Fulton Municipal Building, 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, on or before December 19th, 2000, up to 9:00 AM and be publicly, publicly opened at 9:15 AM that same day in the common council chambers of the municipal building on the second floor for timber sale at the Great Bear Farm in accordance with specifications prepared by Forecon Incorporated, 11 North Main Street, Cortlandt, New York, 13045. Detailed specifications may be obtained from Forecon Incorporated at the address stated above. Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. I'll move it. Discuss contract negotiations PPA.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Are we gonna hit this one when we get back with the police? Are we gonna hit this one then?
What, we, we are going to most likely reconvene and take action on this as we have to discuss a tentative agreement on this, so. That and on the department head agreements, that is the situation that jammed the copier downstairs. So we will be back out.
Where's the neighbor? Mary Lou's mother's in the hospital, so I haven't seen her yet. I don't know, just probably. She's got a bad heart and keeps blowing, keeps draining the lungs. It used to be like once a year, now it's, it was a month. She's gonna go surgery. She'll die right on the table.
The storm man doesn't say anything. No, 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 I'm talking about the bumble, the bumble storm.
We have no assurance that that's gonna happen. We're not gonna make dollar one until this are treated more than 50%.
What is that? Well, there, you sent Clarissa. She didn't do too well. I was a kid once, so.
Still is.
I had my Phil Rudolph. What show? Oh, that was the, that was Santa Claus. That was the Something like that.
Yeah, that's the way I thought it was. It was like a one-year transition to make them happy. And we're paying them five to fifteen with no assurance that we're ever gonna get that back. No way. No way. Yeah, CCA, that was the one-time
I thought it was one-time shot.
One-time shot. Not one time every year, but three years. The one-time shot for that?
I got no idea.
Balance, you go under CSEA. Now you gotta go to, now you, you're CSEA, Santa.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't come one of the three births at this point.
You could do that, John. You get that call. When he got involved with contracts, equalizing, getting some contributions and help. Unfortunately, you don't get the contribution and help insurance for the cops. Can't get that call a little bit away from the other one. I know, so now what's gonna happen is two years. Now we have to go back to CSEA and say, well, geez, you have to pay the first year, but not the second, the third, so we'll make it up to you. To make it even again. I know, but isn't that how you see it happening? Because they'll say.
That's how the taxpayers are getting screwed. Is that things killing? And we're kinda screwed because we can't do anything about it, so. Everybody wants to fire the police. It's not that we didn't try. Oh, I know. Some people think that they have a. It really is a. Expensive to run. The state is the largest state. That's why you've got new business leaving the state. And now we elect Hillary Clinton as a senator who recognizes the problems in New York State. But at the same time, if she acts on her political beliefs, we'll end up having the exact opposite impact of what she says needs to happen. Which is frustrating too, so. Her philosophy increases societal pressures, really causes government, which then forces more business to leave. So unfortunately, that's a situation. She does what she says she's gonna do. The economy is not, it's all software. Unfortunately. New York State's an incubator for education. We have some of the historic best colleges here. We educate a lot of people and they end up leaving the state. So we're doing it for everybody else.
No, it'll just be a resolution that raises me to, uh, sign the tentative, yeah, sign the tentative agreement to entertain a motion to return to open session.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried.
Joe, you're back on the job.
You wanna read your?
Which one you want first?
Let's do this one first.
Okay.
Were you on strike there for, no? You on strike for an hour? Now you're back on the job?
Yeah. Result that the mayor be authorized to sign the annexed agreements with the following city employees that provided an informational reference concerning rules, benefits, and other provisions and conditions of employment for 2000 through 2003. Personnel, civil service administrator Barbara Weyman, city assessor Diane Moore, recreation superintendent Barry Ostrander, city clerk Joseph Tietro, city chamberlain James LaBota, water and sanitation commissioner Roger Parsons, commissioner of public works Raymond Graham, fire chief, code enforcement bureau chief Anthony Garia, police chief Mark Spahn, personnel assistant Kathleen Hawsworth.
Motion?
Move it. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried. Next motion?
Result that the mayor be authorized to accept the tentative agreement between the city of Fulton and the police benevolent association.
Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
You got that?
Yes.
That is a.
It's carried.
Carried, okay. Does anybody on the council have any business bring for the council? Anyone have any business bring for the council?
Bob?
Nobody, nobody in the audience.
I spoke earlier.
Good for you.
Very good. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Can't get anywhere voting against it.